To the city of Daly City Parks and Recreation Commission for Tuesday, July twenty six, two thousand and twenty-two. Covid nineteen announcement for public meetings pursuant to government code five four nine five three. Members of the Daly City Recreation Commission staff will participate. Excuse me, will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's YouTube channel at youtube dot com slash Daly City Video Meetings. The city's agendas website, uh, www.dalyacity.org slash agendas or on local channel twenty-seven Comcast. Public participation, there are two ways to submit public comment, one, send a written comment by four P M. On the meeting day. And two, join to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment in writing, please email active at dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include, uh, the item number and or title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by four P M. Will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members prior to the meeting. Those comments received after four will be added to the record and will be shared to the Recreation Commission following the public meeting. Comments are not to be read out loud into the record. To speak at the meeting via Zoom, join at HTTPS colon slash slash U S zero two web. Dot zoom dot U S slash J slash eight four six three two three four two nine nine four. Zoom will require you require an email address and name. The name entered will be visible online, it will be used to notify you when it's your turn to speak. You may also join by visiting HTTPS colon slash slash zoom dot U S slash. Enter meeting ID eight four six three two three four two nine nine four, then enter the email address and name. The June twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two regular, uh, Recreation Commission meeting may also be accessed via telephone by dialing one six six nine. Nine zero zero six eight three three, enter the meeting ID. Eight four six three two three four two nine nine four, then press pow. When you would like to speak on an item during the public comment portion of the meeting, you will need to use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Public comment, uh, public comment is limited to two minutes max and speakers may only comment once per item. You may familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to, uh, you must familiarize yourself with you with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. The city will not be provide providing any technical support. If you do not wish to speak, the city requests that you watch. The Washington media meeting via live stream on the city's YouTube channel at YouTube slash Daly City or youtube dot com slash Daly City Video Meetings. The city's agendas website, dailycity.org slash agendas or on local channel twenty-seven. Persons with disabilities will require auxiliary aids or services and attended, uh, and or. Uh, participating in the meeting should call the office of the city clerk, nine nine one eight zero seven eight as soon as possible. Ava- availability of all public records. All public records to an open session item on this agenda, which are not exempt from disclosure pursuant to the California Public Records Act. That are distributed to a majority of the legislative body will be available for public inspection at the city clerk's office, City Hall located. At three 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 Ninetieth Street, Daly City, California during normal business hours. At the same time that the public records are distributed, uh, or made available to the legislative body. Alright, so, uh, we'll go ahead and call it to order. And we'll go ahead and, uh. Start with the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome. And we'll go ahead and start with roll call.
Chair Ortiz.
Here.
Vice Chair Luna.
Here.
Commissioner Anoy.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda. And Commissioner Paniza.
Here.
Thank you. Alright, uh, we'll go ahead and approve, uh, this meeting's agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
I approve the motion to approve.
Uh, can I get a second?
I second.
Awesome, uh, and moving on, uh, with approval of last, uh, meetings minutes, uh, can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to motion approve last meetings minutes.
Awesome, and a second?
Second.
I second.
Awesome, awesome. Alrighty, uh, Denise, you want to take it away with the director's report?
Thank you so much, Chair Ortiz. So today, uh, we have a few presentations, uh, partly by our staff. Uh, the first one is going to run through Leilani, who is the assistant to the city manager and the Arts and Culture Commission. So I'm going to turn that over to Leilani.
Thanks Denise. Good evening, Chair Ortiz and Recreation Commissioners. We have here today our, uh, vice chair for Arts and Culture Commission, Dori Paniza, as well as Commissioner, um, Elizabeth Espinda. And I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to them, um, to share in upcoming project, which they would like to collaborate with the Recreation Commission on. Thank you.
There you go. It's Elizabeth.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Liz Espinda. Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry. Okay, and then along with us tonight was joined by our vice chair, Dori Paniza. And our chairperson, Joanne Boston, and our commissioner. Jo, um, Arlene Das-Maguall and Nancy Rodriguez regrets that they can't make it tonight due to their prior, uh, engagement. So. Once again, um, I would like to. Make aware of you guys that we're having a, we're having this project installation, mural project at six six five five, um. Mission Street, which is the War Memorial, um, building. And I'm pretty sure you guys are very aware of that building. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to be speaking to you guys what our plan is for that building, for this mural. Installation project that we've been planning since, uh, late two thousand and nineteen and we're still on it. Uh, due to the covid, we're kind of off and on on it because of the some, you know, lo- logistic and statistic planning. Um. We have, our goal is of our timeline is about July. This month, all the way to March of two thousand and twenty-three. I think that's one, so the hopefully by the first quarter, we already have some kind of, uh, unveiling. Um, for you guys, and this building is to honor the veterans, um, of our veterans here in Daly City. Um, and I would like to know if you guys have some kind of any suggestion or any idea. What types, you know, like logistic? Um, what would be in that building? We have some and we're, and you, let me see, Joanne and Arlene are working the logistic of the, um, artists of this. And we are ready, we're working in our marketing and sponsorship logistic on this one as well. Um. I am in charge or I'm leading the fundraising of this, um, project. That is to ask sponsorship from, um, vendors, citizens, um. Any businesses or even, um. You know, uh, any, anyone that is willing to support this, this, um, or fund this, um, project. And then. Arlene and Joanne is working on the artists. And they want to know how much it's gonna cost. I think we have already the, the price on this, the budget is we're looking about thirty thousand. To for this installation to, to, to happen. Now, what we need to know is from you guys is in collaboration with you guys is, um. What would you like to see in this wall? Just from, you know, from you guys. So we would like to, to get your feedback on that one as well. And what would be the Parks and Rec, uh, and the city council and general public to see in that mural? So that is meaningful to us to get your opinions and your ideas, what you want to see in this wall, because this wall, I'm pretty sure you guys. Seen this wall there, it's a pretty big wall, there's like three section. So it would be nice to put the, you know, honor in the veterans and on that wall. So far, do you guys have any question before I go on?
Oh, yeah, I do actually, uh, the wall, we're talking about the wall facing the Mission Street?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the south side, east-south of Mission.
Okay, okay.
It's at the end, is that correct, Leilani? Like, uh, if you face the building, if you're on Mission Street, your face is on the right side, there's a big wall there, it looks like a three-section.
And you guys are just looking for like, I, ideas that are inspired from like recreation in the past, maybe in like folks that have made an impact. In the community nearby in like the realm of recreation?
Yes, like the, you know, the, um, the, the veterans, the military veterans that lives here in Daly City. Um, what I want to make you guys aware also is Nancy Rodriguez is, uh, getting, she's collecting all the history of it. Of the veterans here in Daly, in Daly City, she's hitting on that one, what is the educational components for this? And, you know, what, you know, what serves the public? Um. Will benefit the public that, hey, I'm so proud of it, you know, there's a veterans, um, memorial in there. So in the, in the future, maybe there is some kind of like a Veterans Day. Every year we could have a somewhat celebration and that one. So those are the factor, those are something that we need to, to think about as well in the future. So we would like to collaborate with you guys, see what your feedback is and, um, what you can help us to make it happens here in Daly City. There's already one mural there on top of the hill, Daly City, we did just finish, which is, um, Victoria Mabellang was hitting on that, leading on that one. So it says, uh, Daly City, so I don't know if you guys seen that.
Okay, so real quick, um, I know you have a projected timeline for, uh, the end of Q one next year, March two thousand and twenty-three. I think perhaps, uh, maybe we could take, uh, a month or two in the, in our next meeting and we could do a little bit of homework and. Figure out like what would be a, a, a great person to honor perhaps in the mural or maybe a particular event that happened. Within, uh, Daly City that could be honored as well.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah, and, um, as I said, um. Joanne, our chair is really good on, on planning this, so, um, we all be able to, hopefully we all be able to join your, or, um. Wait, next month, we don't have any meeting, right? August, so September meeting is Zoom, so, um, hopefully we can, you know, join you guys again.
Awesome, awesome. And then one more thing, perhaps, uh, in terms of collaboration as well, I know you guys are like. Spearheading the, and you yourself are spearheading the fundraising for it.
Yes.
I'm assuming, uh, you'd love us to reach out to folks to also fundraise, so if you had like a particular package. That you have set up for vendors, if you could provide that to us so we could use our networks as well.
Yes, we are ninety percent now done with that, it's the, it's a packet, it's a package. And that will show the location, will show, you know, the logistic of it, like what it takes. To make this, you know, installation, yeah, we have, uh, we, we are working on that, we're on ninety percent almost done. And we could share that with you guys.
Awesome, so perhaps we could have it set up where we could have you guys on the agenda as soon as either September or like. I wouldn't go past October on it, um, because that way you guys could really finalize planning and execution throughout the start of the year next year. So, um, maybe if we, we'll, we'll figure out a time to get you guys back on the agenda and revisit this and, uh, hopefully. The package done by then, that would be a awesome tool for us to reach out.
Love that, we would love that because it is boiled down to the bottom, at the end of the day, this is all our project, this is our city. This is our community, so we all work on this together, that would be wonderful.
Awesome, awesome. Um, real quick, uh, I just want to turn to Christina, uh, real quick, uh. That, that would be a good idea, right, for getting the package provided to us and then we'll just reach out to our networks?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I mean, um, we would love to help in that way and we'll, we'll also get some ideas going, um, in time for the next meeting.
Yeah, because, uh, what I'm thinking also is if anyone knows any developer, that would be a very big target there. Uh, we're even thinking about Amazon, uh, uh, Facebook, you know, even Warriors, right? Because, you know, they would, they will have their designation, their logos on that wall, because they, whoever the big, you know, the number one sponsor. We're hoping and wishing that one, one person, one company, one unit will just take it.
Just take care of it.
Yeah.
Yes, but, but guys, since we have in this topic, I just want to mention it. Keep in mind, we have, Leilani will support me on this, keep in mind that we also have other walls that belongs to the city that we could do mural. So these are our main project, which is the War Memorial, because it is, you know, on top of the hill, Daly City, and we need to make that area beautiful.
Awesome, awesome, well, if there's anything else, it is no, but thank you so much for that.
Thank you for having us. Dori, do you have anything to say, our vice chair?
I think you said everything, but it's good that the, the park and rec was really behind us and then I'm so proud because my son is there, I can. Talk to him also to get a support from us, yeah, because of his, uh, connection also. So I hope it's gonna work together again, yeah.
And also if you guys need anything, I mean, any help from us, please do not hesitate, we're here, we'll do our very best.
Yeah.
Well, again, awesome, thank you so much for the presentation and informing us, uh, we would love to help out on this project as much as we can. Um, and yeah, uh, we'll, I'm sure we'll let you know when we'll meet on this topic, uh, yet again, hopefully September, no later than October.
Thank you.
Yep, alrighty.
Thank you, everyone, for having us, this is good, uh, starting for both all the commission, yeah, it's a teamwork for Daly City.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Denise, Leilani, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna transition now to the next item on the agenda and it would be with Gina Meganini. Who's the Recreation Services Supervisor at the War Memorial Community Center. Um, speaking of War Memorial, uh, she also oversees the after-school youth recreation program and, um, an internship program for the teens. As well as many other things, um, and with her is Jeff Perrangin, and he's the Recreation Services Coordinator. Um, he supports the Bay Shore Community Center, so they're gonna talk about the after-school youth recreation program, give you a little recap. What happened this past school year and then potentially what's going to be coming in the next school year, so take it away Gina and Jeff.
Hello, everyone, I'm Gina, like Denise said, we run programs at War Memorial Community Center, which I'm really excited for a mural, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Um, and also, uh, coordinate after-school programming with the help of my colleague Jeff, I don't know who's in charge, but can we spotlight Jeff? Oh, I guess I could do it, huh? There he is, A O, um, so Jeff is new to the after-school youth recreation program, but he's not new to recreation, so it was great to have him on my team. Um, our team now, uh, for this past school year, which was quite a doozy, as you all know, going through covid, this is the first time coming back with all our schools. Last school year, we only returned to one, so returning to all five this year was definitely a challenge with staffing. Um, multiple covid tests, uh, weekly for our staff and our kids and lots of emails, close contact and all that fun stuff. But that's not in the presentation, we will show you a little bit about what we did this year with the help of our amazing staff. And I will share my screen now. Can we see my screen? Or not yet?
Not yet.
How about now?
Yes.
Cool, alright, see if I could do this now. Alright, uh, so the youth recreation program, um, and community events, so within the school year and the amount of kids that we serve, we also do community events. Historically, before covid, we did a lot of like partnerships with the schools and we'd have, uh, group activities like dodgeball tournaments and. Uh, four-square tournaments and lip sync contests, um, this year was a little bit different, we actually helped us to support some of our promotions. And community events for our districts. So today we're going to talk about the program overview, um, we will highlight our spring symposium, which is a big word for training. Uh, we do two trainings each year for all our staff, um, and this year, uh, we're gonna, or this presentation, we're gonna highlight the spring one. And then we'll talk about our community events. The after-school youth recreation program is part of the youth recreation program, which encompasses camps and summer and enrichment classes. Um, the after-school youth recreation program is held on these schools, uh, Daniel Webster Elementary, Fernando Rivera Intermediate School. Uh, Janupar Sarah Elementary School, M H Tobias Elementary and Panorama. So if you are familiar with Daly City, which I think all of you are, you could see that we're kind of all over the map. Um, Daniel Webster is located over by Seton, uh, Fernando Rivera is also over there, Janupar Sarah is over by Geller, M H Tobias. Is gonna be, uh, more over in the Westlake area and Panorama is up on the top of the hill in, uh, almost in San Francisco, depends on what side of the street you're on up there. So we, we definitely touch a lot of our youth within, uh, the city of Daly City and many districts. It's a lot of words on this slide, so I'm gonna help to paraphrase it. Um, the after-school youth recreation program provides students with a safe, nurturing, healthy and welcoming environment. I'm not sure how many of you guys were after-school kids, I was one and I was a terrible one. Um, so when I got into recreation, especially into after-school programming, I wanted to make sure that staff, kids and families were number one safe. But they're also engaged, so Jeff and I make sure not only including the symposiums and the trainings that we do for our staff. Uh, but we offer a lot of different ideas and experience to help them understand that this is, for the most part. We are with these kids more than their families are with an extended school day, so if those kids get to school at eight. And they're going to five-thirty, they're with our school, our school faculty, which includes us, because we do an extended day, we support lunch duty. And then we go into the aftercare, which is our after-school programming. We go from school release to five-thirty and that includes all minimum days. We do a trimester registration and that was new this year. Trimester registration, um, really helped with covid because we had the same kids each day. Um, previously and historically with the after-school youth recreation program, we did monthly registration. So each month we'd have a new group of kids or we'd add new kids or lose kids, so the trimester program was designed to actually, um, keep. The, the pandemic and the covid precautions intact, but it ended up, all the families loved it because they didn't have to register each month. Um, so it was a win-win, um, they are enjoying the trimester registration at this point. Um, and we're about to open up for the new school year coming up this week. Scholarships are awarded and also subsidies, so we partner with our school districts and some of them have allotted money. That they share to offset the price of the registration, um, but anybody that applies for a scholarship, there's multiple ways for us to award them. Uh, multifamily. Uh, multifamily discounts, um, are not applied, but can be, um, can be supported with the help of district funds, which is nice. We operate a hundred and eighty days, five hundred and ten to six hundred and seventy-five, depending on the program. And the reason why the hours vary is because we have a kindergarten program and they get out earlier. And then we have our first through fifth graders that get out a little bit later. We have nine programs on five sites in three school districts. So you could only imagine going through a pandemic and having to follow everybody's different rules, different calendars, different testing schedules. So Jeff and I really struggled at first, um, until we, we got it figured out. Obviously, probably like two weeks before the school day ends or the school year ended. But, um, it's very difficult to coordinate that many, especially if you're thinking about not only that, but five different principals and school faculty. Um, and the big number down there, and I think that it's important to see because five sites says something, but three hundred and forty-two kids a day we were serving at that, um, at the end of our, our trimester three of last year. Uh, moving into next school year, um, we're planning on probably adding an additional hundred. Um, so we'll probably be up to about four hundred and maybe thirty, uh, depending on the capacity within the school. Um, and the, the comfortability of the families and the faculty, including the principal and the district. Does anyone have any questions so far? Okay. Um, so this is a, a video that our marketing department put together, um, and it was obviously at the end of our trimester three, uh, they were going into summer. And when you listen to this, they, they talk a lot about like what I'm going to miss. Um, and, and the reason, the, the questions were asked in a way like, what do you like or what? And when you're talking to kids, if they're like, what do you like? We like to do all these things. So our interviewers really tried to focus on, you know, what they would miss, like if they were promoted or they went to another school. So, um, when you hear that, I will play it now. Can we hear the audio? No.
No.
This is where I needed a Gardo, see. So you can't hear the music at all?
Stop sharing your screen really fast.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, share it again. And there's a little box you should click that says share audio.
Got it. Thank you. Alright, unimas.
So mostly we have a lot of activities that we do at after-school because usually in real school, we just do and like we just learn and stuff, but after-school, it's pretty much fun.
They have amazing art projects and it's very fun and they always put a lot of joy and happiness to it. I like their food projects. Like today we're doing candy sushi.
My favorite memory of aftercare is when Miss Mackenzie and Miss Cherry made boba for us. I liked how there was a variety of flavors and they put a lot of thought into it for us.
I like the amount of time we get to do our homework and how much we get to play outside.
I think it's really nice that they have different sport equipment, different sport activities.
What I'll miss when I grow up in aftercare is what all the different activities will do. Like yoga, track, arts and crafts, playing outside, doing wraps and taking care of TK and all the other fun stuff.
Something that I'm gonna miss is probably like maybe the staff because they're kind and caring.
It would be the staffs for me. They're very nice staffs there.
Help, helpful.
They are careful.
There's so many nice staff around and at snack, when people, uh, don't have snack, they're so, they're so generous to, uh, provide people without snack, snack.
My favorite staff is, staff is Miss Mackenzie because she's nice and forgiving. And she leads us so, through so many fun activities like yoga.
My favorite staff is probably, mm, Julia or Dylan because they're pretty cool. They help us with activities and stuff.
And my favorite staff is Dylan because he takes care of us and teaches us really, um, well.
My favorite staff is Miss Cherry because she does the arts and crafts, which is one of my favorite activities covered. And, uh, same, my, my favorite staff is Miss Cherry because she has a, she's very decorative and I love how she has her own videos of crafts.
Honestly, I'm just gonna say this. I'm not saying this like, uh, because I'm in front of the camera. Um, I feel like Park and Rec is somewhat of my personality. I would, if I'm honest, I'm, I would be really dry if I didn't go to Park and Rec, so.
I love working with recreation because I love working with kids and getting to bond with them after school. Every year, the kids are happy to see me and that's, that's why I stay.
Not only do we facilitate with the kids, but we also make bonds with them. Um, I love seeing them grow throughout the years. Especially the quiet ones and how we see them grow out of their shell.
Personally, I've been here for like six, seven years. I love being here. Um, like I said, I've been here a long time. I feel like I, there's opportunities where I could have left or even left opportunities to, to stay here, um, because I love the kids so much and I love the, like she was talking about, I love the bond that we have with them. We're trying to have them come to after-school and enjoy themselves. Like, school is already stressful and as it is, like during the school day, we don't want them to have to come to us and feel like they can't have fun and be themselves. Like, we give them a free space to be able to be themselves and, and, and have fun.
That warms my heart. Um, just to, to hear that type of love coming from the kids. And, and like I said, I was an after-school program and I was a terrible after-school kid and I had one mentor, um, that Jeanette, and I still see her to this day. She's the reason why I got into what I do today. So, um, we definitely make a difference. And I am so thankful to have such an amazing staff and, and program and faculty at the supporting schools. Um, yeah. Alright, see if I could, there we go. Um, the next thing I'm gonna talk about is the spring symposium, our training. Uh, we actually, uh, had this training and Jeff headed this whole training in regards to safety. So, uh, part of the, part of the process with COVID, um, we found out that we were missing some safety manuals within our after-school programming. We usually opt to go with the, um, the school, uh, procedure, but the school procedure has everybody's numbers on there. That is not our numbers. Um, so our idea for our spring symposium was to get the Daily City Police Department, the Fire Department and our Aquatics Department, uh, or Program, pardon me, to come and basically try to get us to start thinking about what we would do in a state of emergency. So we took our local district's, uh, emergency plans and we've created our own dependent on each site. Now, our Daily City Police Department went through a very thorough, um, active shooting and, uh, which I know we ha- we have to do this stuff. It's not fun to do, but learning about what to do in that case, knowing your surroundings, knowing where your doors are, understanding, um, what doors lock, where to go, um, in, in those cases. And then also our Fire Department, we talked about the same thing and it was, and it was cut quite revealing to know like, yeah, we go to the school every day, but like where, where is that fire alarm? What do we do? And the, the Daily City Fire Department had every school's plan and we were able to go over exactly what, um, our staff are responsible for and including myself and Jeff. What, what needs to happen in case of an emergency? Um, the aquatics, uh, program came in and I know they're both here today. So Chris Mariano and Brian Sai came in and did, uh, first aid and CPR training with all our staff. So to have that type of training, they did not get certified, but they are trained. Um, and we are planning on certifying a few of them, including our, our site leads, if they are not already done so. But to have that type of partnership within the city organizations to come in and to support the forty-one staff that was in attendance, um, it really meant, meant a lot and, and Jeff did a great job coordinating with those three entities. Um, but then we did an escape room. So that was all serious, like in the morning time, we had lunch and then we actually all part- are participating in an escape room by site. It stressed me out beyond belief, but everybody else had a good time. I stayed in the room. I couldn't get out. But, um, to see them interacting and bonding and competing against each other, because for the most part, when you're on a site, you're usually with a set number of staff and kids each day. So to have all the staff together participating in something, that was really fun. And this is them. I think we're only missing like two in this picture. So this is, um, all of our, our staff members for A Y R P for this last school year, again, probably missing one or two. Um, but it was a great turnout, um, and it, and it was a fun day. The next, uh, couple slides are gonna talk about community events. So like we said, well, like I said in the beginning, we, we participate usually in community events, bringing the kids together, but because of COVID, um, we participated in different ways. So these two, um, promotions, we did the fifth grade promotions. So the Janupar Sarah Elementary School Fifth Grade Promotion was actually onsite. So coordinating with the school faculty, the P T A, P T O, Public Works and the current staff for A Y R P, we were able to host a promotion outside on their yard, uh, with three hundred and fifty people. So Public Works was, um, nice enough to transport all our chairs from the War Memorial Community Center and Westlake um, to be able to host a wonderful outside promotion for our families. And it's not just the kids that are in our program. We supported the whole fifth grade class. So everybody could be there, grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle, uh, be outside and not be, um, at risk because of COVID. The second one was M H Tobias. That was actually located at Westlake Park. We did that and I'll show you a picture of that as well. Uh, coordinated with the faculty, P T A, P T O, and then also, um, getting, making sure that the stage and everything was done um, at Westlake Park. So this is Janupar Sarah Elementary. Uh, you could see, and I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with Janupar Sarah, they have a really big, uh, yard and it's actually above the school. Um, so you could see all the families in the back and then you could see the kids, um, facing their families. And then up on stage there, that was the stage that I don't think you could see within that picture. But that is the After School Youth Recreation Program staff for that site and that is Principal Sampañan, um, with the hat on. M H Tobias Elementary School Promotion that was located at Westlake Park. You could see the stage also on the left-hand side of the picture. Um, that hosted, uh, three hundred and fifty people as well. Um, they were actually able to park there. Um, and they, I, which, which is not pictured. They have, they had a really cute photo booth area. Um, I didn't take a picture of that. And then onstage also is the M H Tobias, um, program staff and they, they're having a good time. Uh, the last thing I'm gonna talk about is the Jefferson Elementary School District Student of the Year Celebration. So last year, we did this for them and it was outside and it was a drive, uh, in. So they stayed in their cars and the kids came up and did their speeches. And I'm not sure if anyone's aware of this event, but it's highlighting two students from each school, uh, in the Jefferson Elementary School District, who's been awarded the Student of the Year. It's a very huge honor. Um, it, it was a beautiful ceremony. So Jeff and I coordinated with, um, Principal Armstrong and Principal Hong, which are both two of our principals. So it was nice and easy, uh, to coordinate that and with the help of, um, the Westlake staff and then Jeff and I, and then also, um, supporting staff at, down at the administration office, we were able to host that. And, um, there were certificates, the, the city council was there, chief police, Colma's mayor, everybody was there and it was a beautiful ceremony. And that was the setup. Um, and so each school had their own little table and they were able to see slideshows of, you know, highlighting each kid with the principals and the, and the faculty and the staff. And that's the presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Um, real quick, Gina, is it okay if you could, uh, go back to one of those other slides that you had all the, the sites that you had listed?
Sure.
And then this was a recap from last year, correct?
Yeah, so we ended school, I think it was the tenth of June, if I remember correctly. Let's see. Let's see if I could do that for you.
I know, if, no worries.
No, no, it's okay. I should know what I'm doing. Let's see.
Well, yeah, overall, like awesome work. I think it's a great idea that you're doing, uh, Student of the Year. Um, sounds a, familiar, familiar to another program that, uh, another organization runs. But I love the fact that it's, you know what I'm talking about, Gina, but.
Yes, I actually worked for them for seven years, but, um, it, this is through the Jefferson Elementary School District. So we just helped to create the event at our site.
I just think it's overall, like, it, it, it's an opportunity for us to give back to like the students that really excel and care about the community and really go for it. And like, I feel like there's oppor- like this, is this the first year you're doing it under, uh, recreation?
The After School Youth Recreation Program?
Or no, not that, uh, the Student of the Year.
Oh, it was actually the second year that, um, I was able to be a part of it. Um, last year, because of COVID, historically, this event has been held in Colma Community Center. And partnering with three out of the five schools that we partner with is with Jefferson Elementary School. Um, it was kinda like, hey, why aren't you at our facilities? Like, why are you going to? Um, so in talking with the superintendent and talking with the principals, um, we have such beautiful facilities. But last year, it was outside at Westlake Park. And then this year, it was determined by, uh, the superintendent of Jefferson Elementary School District that it was to be inside. So the request was made, um, for two locations. One was the War Memorial Community Center, because it would have been easier for me, because I live there. And but there, the other one was Pacelli Event Center and that was, um, ultimately what was selected, mainly due to the parking. Um, and, um, and it was a success.
And I just wanna throw one more thing out there, Gina, before, uh, I'll pass it off to the other commissioners. Um, for the next year's twenty twenty threes, if we, if you could hop on one of our meetings before or during your planning process for it, um, I think the commission around that time would love to figure out a way to help give like, to boost that prize up for the Student of the Year. So it's like, uh, on a grand scale and make it feel like, you know, like every year, it's a, the students in the A Y R P should really be like, hey, I wanna go for that student.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, we could create a whole nother event with After School Youth Recreation Program, Student of the Year. So the, the opportunity for that is definitely, but when, when it comes down, hopefully that the, they'll reach out and make sure that we're a part of it again. I'll make sure that you guys are involved.
Awesome, awesome.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gina and Jeff, the silent partner. Great job. So next, we're gonna transition into our aquatics area. And I think I shared with the commissioners, um, in the earlier part of our meetings that, um, the aquatics area was one of the areas that first went back when everything else kind of shut down. Um, Brian Sai and Chris Mariano did an amazing job in bringing the community back in to an indoor space, um, in a safe opportunity. And they started out with the lessons piece, um, and we've finally built our way up. So they're doing it through the week and on Saturdays and lap swimming. But I'm gonna let them talk more about all of that, but I wanted to commend them on a job well done in bringing the community back into the location of Giamonapool, which we share with the, um, Jefferson Union High School District. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Mariano, the Recreation Services Supervisor, and Brian Sai, Recreation Services Coordinator. Take it away, gentlemen.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm Chris Mariano. Uh, we have Brian Sai, there he is. Um, he's our recreation coordinator, not just at Giamonapool, but also at War Memorial. Uh, my office is also at War Memorial, War Memorial, so, you know, we're, seems like we're talking about War Memorial for this meeting. But anyways, I digress. Uh, we're here to talk about, um, aquatics. Um, so let me share my screen. Can, can you watch the, my screen or no?
Do, do what you did for sure.
Yep.
And then just go to whatever the app that you're going to be sharing. Should be able to.
You'll see that?
Did you want me to share, try to share mine?
Yeah. Okay, so as you know, Giamonapool is at Westmore High School. And we, we were open, we were, during COVID, we were considered an essential activity, an essential program during pro, during COVID. So we actually were, we started planning an opening during the summer when COVID was at its peak. We decided to open in November. So that's the first thing we started was lap swim, which we offered to the public, which is again, one person per lane. So on the next slide, we are going to look at the four things we currently are offering. It's lap swim, aquafit, which is a swim exercise and the lessons is lower level and upper level, which we currently offer. And again, the first thing we offered was lap swim, which was in November of twenty twenty, I think. So if you can go back real quick, so lap swim again, during, during the pandemic. During the pandemic, we offered a swim and go policy, which meant swimmers were to come and prepare to swim, hop in for thirty minutes, do it during a lap swim, hop on out and then exit, which was our safety protocol at the time and currently is. They are to register online, whether it was on our active iPlay system or we were having a QR code, which they can come to the pool, scan on their phones and register for laps. So that's what we were offering when we first offered lap swim in November twenty twenty. And then again, we took a break, COVID hit us again, and then we reopened back in March, I believe. So the next slide, again, lap swim is for exercise for participants that are able to swim full laps. So kind of next slide Brian. So again, we opened on November eleventh, twenty twenty. It is for participants that are twelve years and up. We still do the one person per lane. At Giamonapool, it's at thirty minute time slots and must be able to swim twenty-five yards. So the lap swim totals, we totaled from this year, starting January twenty twenty-two until currently today. We have three hundred and forty-three registered customers into lap swim, two hundred and ninety-four are DRC residents. But if we total it back to November eleventh, twenty twenty, we have a thousand fifty-three total registered lap swimmers, with whom ninety, nine hundred and sixty-eight are DRC residents. So from November eleventh, twenty twenty, until now, it would have been, it still is about over a thousand registered swimmers. Aquafit, we recently opened. It's a water exercise class for all customers. Majority of our aquafitters are active adults, but we are welcome to all. We've had customers that are pregnant and they use that as exercise. We've had regular customers that come in and just want exercise at the pool. So it's located at our shallow end of our pool and currently it's offered Tuesdays and Thursdays and Saturdays. So there are participants, I believe that's our Saturday participants, a few of them. As you can tell, all of our customer, all of our lifeguards, both lifeguards are on deck, teaching them how to exercise in the pool. They use the dumbbells, which are weighted once they're dunked in water. We reopen to the public on January second, twenty twenty-two. There's up to sixteen participants. It says sixteen, sixteen-year-old and no swimming experiences needed. So they're standing in three feet of water. It's instructor-led and again, there's music and it's there from, on Saturdays, it's from eight to nine AM. And it's a really good workout. If you haven't tried it, majority of our registered participants will tell you it is an exercise they come back to all the time. So if you want, want to come back and stop by and participate in our aquafit activity, it is a workout. Lower level lessons is what we're offering and it's been about a year since we started offering it. And it's for children with little to no experience swimming. So basically our, our beginning swimmers and up. So we opened that August first, twenty twenty-one. It is during COVID, we went from pre-COVID, we're at one to six instructor to student ratio. But during COVID, we scaled it down to a one to four, which is basically a semi-private. The students currently are six feet apart, as you can tell. Our instructors currently and still do wear masks and face shields while social distancing. What you see is there is a guppies class, or no, a jellyfish class, which is learning how to flutter kick. And during this time, it is a swim and go policy. However, we are changing it, where we currently offer, open the locker rooms in which they currently can change and shower. So those are lower level some lessons. Guppies is the basic beginner class. Jellyfish is a sex step up. Seahorse, otters is an upper level. But you could tell by the, the picture there that, that is a jellyfish class that this student is learning how to properly do a backstroke. So again, it's our basic beginner lesson that we're offering right now. So next is our upper level some lessons is for children that progress through our lower levels and advance to our upper levels and gain more experience in swimming. So upper level some lessons, we opened that earlier, actually. We opened that two months before. We opened that June first, twenty twenty-one. It's same, it's a one instructor to four student ratio. Each student gets their own lane for proper social distancing. And our instructor there is currently wearing a mask. So the students don't wear masks in the water, but they have to put their mask on at the time during COVID, when it was mandated, they would come in with their mask on, take off their mask, when they get in the water, then put their mask on as they leave. Currently as it's situated, we are recommended. So it is not recommended that students come in or participants come in wearing a mask or wearing masks leaving the building. So. So our upper level swim lessons are the sea lotters, sea lions, porpoise, sharks and stingrays. At this point, when they get to the porpoise sharks and stingray, they're really fine tuning their, their technique. And once they find tune their technique, it's all about endurance. Once they get the shark and stingray, they're treading, they're treading longer, they're doing flip turns, they're much more fine tuned as opposed to being the beginner class. And then after stingray, we kind of encourage them either to take our lifeguard course or into our Daily City Dolphin Swim Team. So from January twenty twenty-two until now, we have three participants for both upper and lower swim lessons, two hundred and eighty-three for DRC residents. But if you scale that back, a year ago, we've had a hundred and seventy-three more prior to that total. So if you add that, that's close to five hundred total participants from when we started from June twenty twenty-one. For lap swim, our current, when we start in fall, when we start this fall, which is in two weeks, because Westmore and Jefferson starts school on August eighth, which is really soon, we can have. We scaled back to our swim lessons because school uses the pool for PE from eight to three. It's from six AM to seven thirty. In the evenings, we offer a seven PM to eight thirty PM. And then on Saturday and Sunday, it's seven AM to eleven AM. And you see the fees there, it's six dollars and seven dollars. It's one person per lane currently with thirty-minute time slots. And again, they can register by that. Beautiful QR code up on the screen or they can go online and register on active. Again, those are aquafit participants. Again, those are classes currently in the summer from eight AM tonight, nine AM on Saturdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays from five to six. Those are fees six to seven and no swimming skills required. So here's our fall schedule. We are currently ending our summer schedule a bit early because school is starting at Westmore and Jefferson on Monday, August eighth, which is we can have. So that's what our fall schedule currently is scheduled for, starting August eighth. It is Monday and Wednesdays, five PM, seven PM, Tuesdays and Thursdays, same time. And Saturday and Sunday, nine thirty AM to eleven thirty. Our aquafit schedule changed, so it's still on Saturday, same time. For aquafit Monday and Wednesdays, we went from Tuesdays, Thursdays to Monday and Wednesdays, which is our typical fall, winter and springtime. So for the, the Daily City Dolphins, they actually started coming back the end of May twenty twenty-one. There are competitive swim team that pre-COVID was Mondays to Friday, four to seven PM. During COVID, they were Monday, Wednesday and Friday, four to seven, and the Saturday from twelve thirty to five thirty. And now that we're getting back to, close to being normal and the school being able to use the PE and the pool this year, this coming school year, we've decided to bring them back to their typical pre-COVID, Monday through Friday, four to seven PM. And again, once they, once we finish with upper level some lessons, we kind, we typically tend to encourage our swimmers to either be a part of the swim team or be a part of our lifeguard course. One thing we are excited about is our private pool, pool party, which is returning this fall. We had this three times, three days of the, on the weekend, on Saturdays, we have rec swim and then three pool parties, back to back to back. We slowly want to bring this back to see if there are any interest in coming back to private pool parties. So it's basically forty to fifty people coming to the classroom. We have cake and they bring their food and beverages. And then we have, the participants can get in the pool. We have lifeguards putting inflatables out, we have basketball, basketball rims at the pool and they put basketball in the pool. So we're excited to bring this back. Our staff is excited to bring this back. And I'm sure the public will be excited that we're bringing this back. So the additional programs that we do have, that we did this summer or this year was, is the lifeguard course. Lifeguard course this summer is actually next week. So it's August first, second, third. We're trying to get this in before school starts because we do realize that school is starting and coming back. So it is an all-day course, blended learning. They do have to pass, pass the online course before coming to the first day. We've held, actually we held three, this is our third course that we've had. We had one last summer, this past spring, and then again, this upcoming next week. And then like Gina mentioned in the last presentation, we offered first and CPR training to all of the Ayr P and core time staff that wanted to attend at War Memorial. So that was something we are proud of doing, something that we hope that they can take to not just Ayr P, but facility rentals or A, or SYR P, that if something were to arise, that we train them in first aid and CPR. So that's in our presentation. Do you have any questions for Brian Sai? Just kidding, Brian. Any questions so far?
No questions from me. Just want to say awesome growth to see from the start of the pandemic to now. Now we're talking about parties rentals. So like it's, I'm glad to see like staff in the building, classes going and increase like memberships into the pool. So that's awesome.
Okay, thank you so much Chris and Brian. Appreciate it. We will be transitioning the contracted classes agenda item to either the September, October meeting. So with that, that ends our director's report. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you Denise and to all the presenters today. Moving on with today's agenda, we have commissioners report. Any commissioners want to talk about anything about the parts in recreation or any events that you've got to experience in the last couple of months?
I don't have any report at the moment. I can't think of any events that I recently went to, so.
Maybe want to mention the Key to the City? Represent, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Nate and I had a really great time participating in the city's Key to the City event for Joe Coy, who is a comedian and has a movie called Easter Sunday coming out on August fifth. And so it was really nice to just see the community come together. Oh, and, and the movie is, it's set in Daly City, so that's the exciting part. But it was really nice to just see people together again, other commissioners, other city, you know, staff and council members. So it was, you know, I haven't been to City Hall for a while, so it was just nice to actually see everyone. But it was a really fun time and a huge, I think a huge thing for Daly City. So pretty excited that our city is getting highlighted right now.
Awesome. Anybody else want to share? If not, I do want to check in with Denise real quick. Denise, is it possible if we, if you could provide for like the next meeting, like maybe a list of all of our facilities and perhaps who's the director of each facility? That way we could equip all the commissioners. Cause I definitely want to encourage, like if, if you have a, a facility in your community, maybe in the next couple of months before the next meeting, just pop in, say hi. Maybe we'll add the hours of when the doors are open. Cause sometimes I'll go. Maybe we'll add the hours of when the doors are open, because sometimes I'll go to one of the community centers and it's locked. Maybe it's lunchtime or like after school rec is going on, they got to lock the doors. So if, if we could get that to, it's really dark on in my room, sorry about that. I'll go ahead and fix that in a second, but, but yeah, if that's possible Denise.
Definitely, we'll get that to you. We'll send that through email.
Hope that's better. Alrighty, I guess we'll move forward, announcements and communications for this week, do we have anything Denise?
So I'm, I'm thankful that Vice Chair Luna brought up nothing necessarily going on. We have a ton of stuff coming up in September, the Latino Heritage Month Celebration. In October, the Casa Yan Sa Daily City event coming up. We also have a senior appreciation event happening, the beginning of October, which you'll get some information about. And then of course, trunk or treat to round it out for October. But upcoming this Saturday, we are doing our soft opening and program preview at the Bay Shore Community Center between 11 AM and 3 PM. Again, this Saturday, July 30th, just kind of welcoming the community back to the Bay Shore Community Center. It's been a little bit, there's been some transitions, but we're excited to kind of share that space. The library will be open on the third floor and we'll be doing games and activities and programs to kind of share with all of the age groups in our community, so from the youngest through the seniors. So please come join us, there's going to be food to share with everyone while supplies last, as they say. But we're happy to have everyone back in the community center at the Bay Shore. So that's our only announcement for that one and the other one will be upcoming for our September, October meeting.
Awesome, awesome. And then you're saving the senior one, the senior appreciation announcement for the next meeting, right? Okay, yeah, I just wanted to highlight that because that's definitely one if you guys want to stop. Like I definitely encourage commissioners to stop by to that event. But yeah, awesome for this Saturday at Bay Shore, 11 to 3. Thank you Denise. And if that's all for the announcements, I want to move forward to the agenda building portion. Real quick, just a disclaimer and little tidbits about this particular portion. If you had any particular project in the works that you want to present up into the next coming meeting. This will be the time to address it in the meeting prior. And then we kind of have a little preliminary meeting beforehand to make sure that the agenda is prepared for the next meeting and it's all good. But this would be the time for me personally, I don't have anything to add. Definitely want to get like a update on AyrP for this upcoming year. Looking forward to knowing what type of programs, so perhaps we could have like a quick, it doesn't have to be a huge presentation, but perhaps like what the curriculum will look like for, or what the sites will look like for AyrP coming up. But other than that, I don't really have anything to add, so I'll open the floor to any other commissioners.
No, I don't think I have anything to add right now, thank you.
Also don't have anything to add, thank you.
Alrighty, so maybe Denise, I don't know if it's too soon, like I know we missed a few meetings, like back to back AyrP updates for 20, for the recap, we just had it this meeting, maybe we could have an update for the upcoming year.
So we've got a lot of items on the agenda for September, we're going to do a recap of SYRP, which is the counterpart to AyrP. But we can probably do something in October or November, bring AyrP back.
Yeah, even if it's just like, because I know like, it's going to end up being the start of the AyrP, maybe just like one slide. Let's see what, if there's any change, if there's like a new site added or one, because I know I see panorama all in construction right now. So I want to just make sure we're all good with all of our sites for AyrP.
Sounds good.
Alrighty, moving on to public comment, Edgardo, I'll let you go ahead and take it away.
All right. So public comment section, in accordance with the Brown Act, laws governing regular meetings, the Recreation Commission is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise the hand and speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It's important to note, the staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the chair may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to active@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. So, so we have two. Thank you, one moment. All right, so we have two call in, so the first one, call in user two. I'm asking you to mute now, star six to mute and your time starts once you unmute.
Hello, my name is the public, it's been a little while, it's been a couple of months, everything's good, everything's going great. Really concerned about the commission here, I don't hear a lot of things happening, a lot of changes being made. We really look for changes and a little background. I married a woman where respect is paramount in her culture and I've been trained that way, so have our kids been trained that way. So we really expect to have respect towards the community. And previously what I saw from Denise Brown was disrespect towards Ms. Alana Wong. What could have been resolved right there was a simple apology and it's been months and she still sits up there. I would like to see her removed, please, because I think respect to the community who pays the bills is paramount. With regards to events, events where community should always be involved, we should always be a part of how to handle and how to come up with events. I have a ton of events going on in the city, I would love to be of help, but I just, you know, I'm not with the commission report or whatever it's called for the agenda building, we would love to be a part of it, but we're not. We're, we're, we're shut it down from that part, so it's rather disheartening, we'd like to be involved. Parking rec, well, my kids are adults now, parking rec was huge for them, they loved parking rec, they enjoyed it. They went to JS, Wesbro and then Elko and they graduated and they're adults now and they loved it. You know, we have athletes on this commission, a linebacker for the Cal Bears, great guy. I mean, your family, respect for your families paramount. But anyway, I think respect is paramount, I think community input's paramount. I think everything that the community can do to get involved in this, in this, you can turn it off. Anything you do to get, to have the community get involved is paramount, so and respect for the community, please, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next call, and that was it, it looks like the other caller dropped down, so. That is all, no more public comment.
Okay, thank you, Edgardo. Now that public comments all wrapped up, we don't need a motion to adjourn the meeting, correct? Or do we, we do? Yeah, okay, so with that, can I get a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
I'd like to motion to adjourn this meeting.
Can I get a second?
I second.
Awesome, call this meeting adjourned, thank you guys and the community of Daly City for participating in this evening's meeting. We'll see you guys not in August, but the last Tuesday of September. So you guys take care, hopefully a reminder, we have the Bay Shore event 11 to 3 this Saturday. Hope to see faces over there and take care y'all.
Bye everyone, have a great night.
Bye.